Mike Barton, if you can hear me, will you let me know you can hear us in the room?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Great, we can hear you. Thank you. Teresa, you're gonna get a text from Steve Setaway. Watch for that, please.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me, Chris?
Kind of in a tin can a little bit, we can hear you.
Can you hear us, Liz?
Yeah. Let me test it out.
Liz, you, you sound okay.
Okay.
It's not terrible. You sound like you're sick.
No, I'm fine. If, if I need to come in, I will just meet over after the work session. We'll just see how it goes.
Are you gonna, are you gonna stay for the regular session or regular meeting there too?
Well, I was gonna do it on a note if the policy's working, but if not, then I'll have to boot the over. All right.
I saw that.
Liz, you're gonna have to enunciate very clearly and don't speak fast.
Okay, testing, testing.
There we go, yeah. That worked.
Okay.
Now you can see me shaking my head, you know.
Counsel will call the meeting order. For the record, it is January 18th, 2022 at 4:31 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
And Councilman Borden will join us shortly.
Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
On our agenda this evening, we do need to add, or there has been added a dollar amount to item 17, and that amount is $455,240. So, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda as amended. So, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, as amended.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda submitted. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? You guys have it, and the motion to adopt the agenda submitted is adopted. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We don't have any changes to this, to the consent agenda, so I move to approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You guys have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go on to department commission reports. And item 19, which is resolution number 21-2300, and turn this over to Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, I thought with the mic issues over there, I would just come up here. You have in front of you, again, the resolution to adopt the policy manual that you've had for a couple of months. We have completed the process with collective labor agreement. They have an opportunity to review it. They had no comments on it, so it is before you. We did get some questions that I, hopefully, we answered for Councilman Borden. Just some real operational types of questions. But do you have any other questions, concerns, ready to move it forward? What's your pleasure?
Thank you, Bill. Council questions for Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Bill, my only question is just about revisions, edits, changes. Do those occur on kind of a, an ad hoc basis? Kind of leadership team says, hey, we haven't updated this in a while. It's probably good that we do that, or is there a plan in place that reviews us on an annual or semi-annual basis, something along those lines?
So, great question, Councilman Cavanagh, and I can add Crystal maybe to the conversation. At the moment, right now, we have a policy on how policies get formed. Generally, it has been an ad hoc basis where we've either run into an issue, whether it's a procedure or whether it's the policy, or we run into a situation that policy doesn't cover. And you've seen a few of those over the years. We've had people that won a prize, and we had to address that. We had situations where people were brand new on the job, and there was nothing to cover, donation of leave. So, we have done it when situations arise that just doesn't speak to how do we address this? So, that happens. Occasionally, we have situations. Departments have said, hey, we keep running into this particular problem operationally, but it's beyond just a department issue, and that may come to the director's meeting for a conversation, and then we'd be in the process that way. So, it really isn't, you know, a periodic overview of change or looking to, to fix problems or address things that aren't broken. It really is brought the attention from a department level normally, where something, again, comes up, never was anticipated first time, and the question usually comes first of, do we need a policy or can we just address it? And sometimes we just address it, and then we decide maybe at the director level or from the mayor that we should probably put this in place. This may come up again. We never had it anticipated. We should probably address it for the long term.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
And if I could add, if there's a federal policy change, part, part of that's what Crystal would bring forward if there's something, you know, through, through that, to bring those changes into it.
Yeah, and primarily to add, those tend to be, some law changes, obviously, like some things in the discrimination policy were related to legal changes that have happened in the last few years. Primarily, this happened a lot procedurally, where it's mileage with IRS, right? There's an annual review by the IRS, so that's a change. It's done annually, but it's all procedural. So, it's really is just following if FLSA changes or IRS regulations change, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, additional questions for Mr. Neri? Is she?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to let you know Councilman Borden is here now.
Councilman Borden, we, we are on item 19 regarding the resolution number 21-2300 for the policy and procedure. Didn't know if you had any questions or comments for Mr. Neri or Ms. Ritchie.
Thanks, sorry, I'm, I'm driving in. We'll be there in about 20 minutes. So, I, I had just questions I had sent off to Crystal. I don't know if she covered those in responses. Just trying to, just some of the overriding concern was what's coming off of counsel's plate, and some things made more sense than others. So, I'd sent over a list to her of questions and I don't know if those things got covered or not, answered, just to see if, if what I was finding was correct and.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could probably.
Did you guys go through that list?
Yeah, so I could, I could probably add to that, Joe. So, the majority of the questions that Joe asked are related to questions that you've all had in the past, related to financial considerations. Like, there's a policy that allows for vacation, but the amount of vacations listed in the procedure. There's a, there's a policy that allows for vacation rollover, and the amount is in the procedure. And as we told Councilman Borden and told you previously, again, all of those financial considerations have to be funded. So, they can't change without funding. We can't just simply give people 100 hours of vacation every month. We can't simply just let people roll over 1,000 hours of vacation or sick leave because there's no funding to pay for any of it without your approval. So, the reason it's separated is because, again, the policy that we're, that we may have this isn't likely to change as often as what we can afford to do. So, instead of putting in policy like you can roll over X amount of vacation a year, it's in the procedure because it's based on funding. If the funding is zero, then the procedure will change to zero. If the funding is increased from what it is currently, then it will get increased in the procedure. So, it's all driven by the budget. One of the other questions that Council, and, and again, Councilman Borden, please stop me if, if I'm mischaracterizing your question, but that was the gist of some of them, was that it was based on the financial considerations, and hopefully, that was an adequate answer. The other question was, operationally, there are certain things that the mayor can do, that the mayor has the authority to do, that policy doesn't really drive that. And for example, I think Councilman Borden's question. Let's see. Standards of conduct is one. So, the, the standard of conduct isn't in a, is, is a policy, but all the conduct that's, that's outlined are all procedural. Those are all operational issues on conduct. So, that's, that's why that's within the purview of the mayor. Another question that Councilman Borden asked, that I don't recall is in the list, but had, had been a question that was requested, was asked, was could the mayor, and it's never this mayor, right? It's never this fire chief, it's never this mayor, it's never this council, but could a mayor at some point in the future change the game? Close City Hall on Fridays, fire every employee except for those that can't be fired by, without council action? The unfortunate answer is yes, the mayor could. If you had a policy that says the mayor can't do that, can the mayor ignore it? Yes, because I don't know how you would penalize the mayor for that. So, could bad things happen in bad situations? Yeah, they certainly could. I think there's repercussions everywhere for that. And other cities around the state have had situations that I know of from other city attorneys, where they have had elected officials, whether it be council members or mayors, that have gone very rogue and have gone very off track and sort of steered the city in a negative way for a little while. Again, there's consequences, there's impacts, there's other ways that those kind of things get addressed. Policy isn't going to answer that for you anyway, because, again, if the mayor wanted to ignore the policy and did whatever they wanted to do, they probably could, and to some degree. State code's pretty broad on authority of mayors and very narrow on authorities of councils. So, it, it does tend to look at the code that the mayor has a great deal of authority on a variety of different things that are not specifically lined out or, you know, mapped out on every single nuance that could happen. So, could bad things happen? Yes. Is policy going to save you there? No. So, I, I don't see the need to address them in policy because I'm not sure that's really where the answer is anyway. But anyway, that answers your question. Again, Councilman Borden, I don't know if that was where you were going, but that was the gist of the questions that I looked at and, and responded.
Um. Sorry, I'm changing lanes here. It, it did somewhat. I mean, just the, the the practical function of some of these things being budgetary items. I mean, some are, some aren't, and there's often capacity within existing budget. I just don't see realistically some of these things coming to council pending council approval. For example, things like vacation days, that's not that's not something that's budgetary necessarily and would come to council if you're going to change or expand vacation days. So, as it's existed, some of these things that are in policy historically do have, have required council to address them, and I'm not certain all of them would always come back before council as, within a budget. It just doesn't feel like that's what would ultimately happen necessarily. Now, it still may be fine to proceed. We may be comfortable with it, but just didn't think all of these are items that are going to come a change that would be tentative pending a a budget approval line item. That's all. That was kind of the reason for the concern, that it's just sort of an eyes wide open that these changes do remove from policy, which officially removes from city council's purview, a bunch of different components that historically we've always had an eye on, so.
And Councilman Borden and, and members of the council, I mean, again, I, I agree with you in principle. I mean, we think very much alike, right? We live in a world, Councilman Borden and I have worst-case scenario. What's the worst thing that could happen, and is there a way to guard against that? And in this situation, I mean, again, one, I think there's trust. I mean, there's, there definitely a necessity to have trust between elected officials. No doubt, between the office of the mayor and the, and office of the city council, there has to be some level of trust between both of those for things to function properly. Are things budgetary? You know, and, and, and then the day, they are. To some degree, they are budgetary. I mean, for example, if the mayor decided tomorrow that instead of accumulating vacation at the rate we currently do it, we're going to increase vacation to every employee a hundredfold. No budgetary implication tomorrow. It is the day if somebody leaves, and we got to pay them for it. There's a budget for that. There's no money budgeted to do that. It has to come out of salaries, and that's where we come from. There's not enough salaries to make that up. If you had overdone that without the budget, and again, Mr. Lavoy would probably be the better person than myself to answer, but there is budget for that. All of you know, we may have a budget for certain types of things, but you still see a budget request to buy a car, a budget request to buy a server for specific items because of the value of them, and because there's not money budgeted for that specifically. So, I, I think you're still going to see, because you have lots of eyes on your budget, not just yourselves. You have Mr. Lavoy, you have all of the directors, you have the mayor. Certainly, again, I'm never going to say bad things can't happen. I worked at a place that did. But there are always people looking at what you're doing, how you're doing it, and who's doing it. That I still think there's some level of transparency. Whether or not the policy's going to drive it, again, a policy's not law. So, the policies themselves are just ways to run the business on a daily basis, operate in a smooth way, give employees some comfort level that there is some order in how we do things. And I don't really foresee that going off the rails, and when it does, trust me, someone will say, this is wrong, and someone's going to say, somebody needs to deal with this. So, that's the best answer I can give you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I appreciate that explanation. I, just one last question. I'd love to, love to hear what other council members and, and you, Mr. Mayor, your position on, on all of these changes, but the last question was, I, I just don't recall a time that having to come before council for a change in some of these items that are proposed to become procedures, where it's come before council and it's got bogged down and you know, either council didn't understand it or split vote on something, and it became a problem that necessitates solving. I didn't, I don't recall it being cumbersome addressing a policy change to council, and that's the last question I had. Just, any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess the best answer I can give you, Councilman Borden, is I'm hopeful by the time it gets to you, all of you, it isn't cumbersome, that we have ironed out all the wrinkles so that it isn't problematic. It's the getting there over something, because the decision point has to be made. For example, if a federal law changed, like, for example, on harassment policy, we've been following federal law that does not align with our policy because our policy is out of alignment with the law. So, we just do it. We follow what the law requires because we have to. And then the policy catches up to it. That's not a great practice, and we don't do it very much. Sometimes we don't have a choice because the process of bringing it forward, going through the director team, coming in front of you, going through work session, getting it on for that. If you say you missed, you didn't have a meeting, you didn't have a quorum, you was a fifth Tuesday, and all of a sudden, your four weeks passed when you needed to have done this, you're just doing it anyway. So, I don't, I agree with you. In general, by the time it comes to the elected body, it's not problematic. It's ironing out all of that ahead of time, and again, trying to create sense of order between what are the rules of the game and how do we then apply those rules.
Okay, I, I get it. I, that's just that's what gave me some hesitation, is if we're able to adjust procedure promptly to address the nuanced need it, we can, we could adjust policy just to say, quite frankly, we got to change it, we got to change it, be quick concurrents. So, I appreciate the explanation. That was just some of my reservation on it. I'd love to hear, I might have missed it earlier on. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I'm going to be quiet and park here and then come in, but I'd love to hear everyone else's thoughts or questions and yours as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Mr. Mayor, I I totally agree that, that council shouldn't be involved, you know, really, generally speaking, with the operational policies in the city. You know, I think that it's, it's always been the operations of the city, you know, minus directors, I guess you could say, has never been under the purview of city council. It's always been in the mayor's office, so I get that. But all other policies we should be involved with, and my, my, my question is the change between what, you know, we're not necessarily a change, but what the difference is between a policy and a procedure. Seems like in this new policy manual, a policy is more of like a statement. You know, like, this is what, you know, this is, this is the, whatever the policy is, and then the nuts and bolts of that policy is now what's called the procedures, and technically, from what I have heard and learned, procedures aren't under the purview of city council anymore. It, that's totally under the mayor's purview. And that's ultimately what I have a concern with. I so I guess it leads me to my, my next question. Will council have influence over non-operational policies and procedures as well? Or are we only going to be involved with the statement, the blanket, like, mission statement, I guess, of what the, the, the policy is versus what the policy is all, all about? And, and I, and I don't know if that's necessarily what has taken place before.
So, Councilmember Burns, and members of the council, and Mr. Mayor, so, again, I think, I'm, I'm trying to think of a time that, again, anything that had any financial impact of any kind didn't come back to this body for some reason. And, and the ones I can give you the best example, so, the travel policy. Travel policy basically says, we need to travel for work purposes periodically, and we will do it at the least expensive rate to the public and make sure that the public is basically given their fair treatment of the doll, of their dollars.
Right.
Makes sense. But how people travel, when they travel, there's so many different nuances to travel today, is a great example, that we tried to handle a lot of those in policy that then conflict with procedure because the procedure or the policy never contemplated that. And everything we, we did differently all related to procedure. Whether it was early check-ins, late check-ins, stay an extra day, don't stay an extra day, which is cheaper to fly, when to stay an extra hotel night, all of those things are all procedurally related because somebody has to make these reservations and, and carry them out. The proceed, the policy of saying, we allow people to travel for business on the city's dime, that didn't change. Nothing about that changed. It was how we did it, because things changed. So, that's kind of where the conversation started, is there's a lot of these things that are very subtly changed in the procedure or how we do it. The rule on doing it doesn't change at all, and clearly, that's not there. But do we stop and not do any of these things until we get through this process that sometimes can take three, four, five weeks, and just keep doing it wrong or differently or poorly when it's all just procedure? It's pieces of paper. It's fill out this document, not that one. Send this one to finance, not that one. Bring receipts, don't bring receipts. I mean, a lot of that stuff felt like procedural things that really the council's not really that overly concerned or engaged with on whether or not we follow receipt or not. But finance does, they care. So, those are the things that drew the discussion on, should we separate these out? So, clearly, the council's always going to review the policies. And anything to deal with financial costs to the city is always going to get the council's feedback because there's a funding mechanism that's necessary to make that happen. And whether it's in the front end or the back end, it doesn't matter. Again, our checkbook is open to the public. That was the intent, Councilmember Burnt. Real, honestly, that's all it was.
And, and, and I don't know if this is necessary, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
And, and honestly, Bill, I, I don't know if this is necessarily I don't know if this necessarily has anything to do with the trust, per se. And, you know, I, I trust the mayor, I trust you, you know, I trust Crystal, whatever. But this is, you know, we, we have, we have great administration in our city right now. But that, what happens in the future when, you know, we have a mayor after Mayor Simison, and that mayor is like, no. Going forward, you know, you guys deal with the policy, we're dealing with the procedures, therefore, you guys won't have any input on what that looks like. And so, my decision not necessarily has to do with what it looks like in today's climate at City Hall, because I think we're doing a good job, generally speaking, but what that looks like in future councils and future mayors and future administrate, you know, administrations. So, that's what, that's what I, that's what I have concerns with. I feel like there's been some changes that are taking our influence away in what we have, and, and what are, what we once had purview over, and we don't anymore. And, and I know that if I had a question for Mr. Mayor, and I know that he would allow us to deliberate, and he'd take time to discuss. I'm, it has nothing to do with you, as just, you know, it's just, it's just that you say, you know, you'll have to trust us, and you know, well, in my role, that, you know, that's like red flags. You know, that, that brings up a red flag, you know? And so, not that I, it, not that I don't trust you, it's just that going forward, I want to make sure that rules are very clear. And I'm not so sure if I like where the rules are in this policy manual.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess my answer to that is the one biggest control the council always has is what's on your agenda. Your agenda and what you want to talk about as a council is always within your control. The mayor helps set it
Right.
with the council president, but if four of you make a motion, or one of you makes a motion that gets seconded, four of you vote to add an item, talk about this policy that you don't like how you understand it's being carried out, and you want to know what it's about. And your answer that you get back from the mayor is, none of your business, see you later. Think you're going to have a problem.
Yeah.
We're going to keep talking about it every week till we get to the bottom of that problem.
Right.
So, I think you. So I think you, you definitely still have a level of control because you control this conversation. The other thing is we have to have trust because the reality is if I'm not carrying out the policy correctly or Crystal or any of our directors, six of you could fire me because you can. So you have great authority over where we spend our money, what we set the rules of the game are, what those rules are. And, and I believe you're going to always have input on what those rules and how they're getting carried out. There are things that again, probably aren't of any great interest to you. Juneteenth is a great example, right? Did we have to grant an employee holiday for Juneteenth last year? No, legally, no, we didn't have to. The mayor chose to, but he spoke to you about it to know that was the right decision point to do that. And there are impacts to how our building is carried out, our services are carried out, there was cost to that, and we need to then put that into motion for the future. So again, I don't foresee it. And, and as I stated earlier, and I know it doesn't sound great. But policy is policy and literally it's a piece of paper. If the mayor chooses to ignore it, I'm not sure what other ways you can get courts to come and support you unless the law gives you that support.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
I'm in somewhat of an agreement with Councilmember Burns' comments, I guess. And I don't know if Councilmember Burns thought about this, what, what the solution is, right? Because I, I hear what you're saying. I just, I'm not, sorry, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
I, I want to propose a solution because I, I've made this comment to a few others and, and that identify the policies that you have a challenge with, that you think are important to not change. Tell Eagle, we'll pull them out and we'll move everything else forward. If, but you have to tell us which ones you have problems with, you know, if they exist. This was a, a process that started three and a half to four years ago. I said, let's finish it. Either get it done or throw it out so that we're no longer on Crystal and Bill's plate to make this happen. So I'm, I, I believe in the things that are out there that are being proposed, but if council has issues with some, tell us which ones they are, pull them out. And if we only can move half of them forward, we move half of them forward. If there's four that matter to the council, identify those four. What, what are they? If it's a global perspective, again, Todd, tomorrow, everyone is going to get full-time administrative time off for the rest of the year. Do I got that permission? Is that okay under the policy? Exactly. I mean, to, to Bill's point, sure, I, I can do that under the policy. Would I? No. So it, and I'm glad Councilman Burns said one thing. He actually said future councils as well. You know, they, they could be the problem in the future on these issues, especially when it comes down to, yeah, we want to change how you post on Facebook. Again, this, our city employee is going to follow what council says about how we post on Facebook. I don't know. What are the repercussions of that? Versus somebody else. So there's definitely things in these policies which really aren't necessarily, in my opinion, should councils purview will be oversight about how we go through the process of establishing who has a Facebook page and who doesn't. And I think we all can agree, there's elements of this that deserve to be separated. But at the end of the day, you guys tell us which ones you got a challenge with, pull them off, and we'll leave them as is from my perspective. But I think that I don't see the general overarching issues from my perspective about, yes, this is what a policy is. A policy is a statement on what we believe or state. Everything else is how we go about handling and doing our business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Just to take for clarification, it's kind of where my initial question started from is that at any point in time, if any member of council has a question or concern about a particular policy or the way it's written, we can bring that up at that next week's city council meeting, right? I mean, this is not a exercise that is going to be revisited five years from now. It's liquid that if any member of council wants to dive into it, they have the ability to do so, correct?
I don't know what that means in the context you're, you're discussing, but.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I guess for, for clarification, kind of your point saying if, if council's got issues with a particular policy that we can pull it out today, but if, if something changes or a policy is brought to life that maybe a council member is uncomfortable with, they could bring that up for a revision or discussion at a council meeting whenever they want.
Working through the council president, getting on the, yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Just to weigh in, you know, oftentimes where I see the conflict is interpretation of the policy. A lot of times the policy's set and then there's interpretation to take your vacation example. And, you know, a board says, hey, this is the policy, this is what you can do, you know, what, what, what we intended to do. And then it's interpreted a certain way and it goes beyond. And then the board, or in this case, the council would come back and say, oh, wait, wait a minute. We need to refine that if that's what you think. But I don't think that's, that's, that's a conflict. The other is sometimes you create a policy and under the procedures portion, sometimes organizations will take the procedures and can modify policy based on how they do the procedures. So there's a conflict there. So I, I think, and, and those aren't issues you can put into the policies and procedures right now and say, okay, everything's going to work. It depends on the individuals interpreting it or what they want to achieve. So then we just have to pay attention. And, and maybe that's some of the issues. How do we know what procedures are moving forward? Even though we set the policy, procedures, Bill, you've defined it, I think accurately. Is that something we need to pay attention to is the procedures as they're enacted? And if so, how do, how do we do that? It's not necessarily the policies, but how do we make sure the procedures follow the policies that, that we enacted and they, they are implemented in the way we intended?
Sounds like the Idaho Legislature Administrative Rules Review. If that's the direction you're recommending.
No, Mr. Mayor.
I would say leave the policy and procedure as is and don't bother.
Councilman Burton.
To that point though, that's for better or for worse, one of the distinctions that what would, what would change in the future with procedure never would come to council. That process would always be internal. We would never see how procedures model.
Generally, generally, generally no. Could it be brought? Absolutely. It could always be brought. If, if, my experience tells me if a procedure is changed to the detriment of someone, someone will tell you. Because that tends to happen. So I don't foresee that without it being daylighted somewhere. Because again, I, I have great confidence that between the mayor and the directors that you're not going to have a concern. If you would prefer that at least when procedures get changed, you can at least see them. I'm fine with that. I, I have no issue with that. But again, many times it's going to be filed this piece of paper, not that piece of paper. You're probably not going to get that worked up about it.
Mr. Mayor. Realistic perspective of policies and procedures would be on HR's website. Everybody would still have access to them at all times. We could still do our affirmative response. Everyone's required to read them every year, including council. And, and have people weigh in on those issues when they come up or are challenges. And, and I, you know, I, I get where council's coming from. I, I truly do. I understand that giving up what a real or perceived influence on issues of significance. How many of these are really significant in your view? How many of you have reviewed the policies and procedures over the last 10 years to determine whether or not a department is following those policies or procedures and brought them up? I only ask, you know, I don't need you all to answer that question. I'm just trying to put it in perspective for realism and applicability. And where you want to invest your time and energy and resources.
Councilman Burton. Council administrator.
Thank you. I would suggest that we run things through consent agenda.
We're, we're missing you.
I think we should run everything through the consent agenda.
She said she thinks we should run everything through the city council agenda.
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Changes in procedure.
I guess, Councilmember Straters, does that mean your preference is to leave it the way it is? Because that's what happens now. Everything comes through. And so whether or not it's a consent item or a discussion, it really doesn't make any difference. That's the way it currently is. And as the mayor said, if there's specific ones you guys have concerns with, let's just iron those out. Let's just take them out. And we will take the procedures if, I'll just pick a random one, sick leave benefits. If that's concerning to many of you, all of you, most of you, whatever, and you would prefer the sick leave benefit policy include the statement of what exactly sick leave is and how much you get and what you get to do with it. Boom, we'll put it in the policy and move on with life. That's fine. I mean, but if the vacation or the travel policy, you don't want to care which piece of paper we file, we would leave what we proposed. I mean, it, it's not that, it doesn't have to be very complicated. But if you have concerns and, and like I said, Councilmember Morton raised, probably six to eight. They all have a little bit of sprinkling of financial considerations in them. If every six, eight of them, you want those in all in policy? Fine, we'll do it. That's no big deal.
Or no, or put in there, no, no procedure maybe changed on this policy without review by city council. You know, if those are the ones that, you know, you want to see and we can identify those. But I, I'm open. I hope you understand I'm, I'm, it's not this way, the highway. I just want this project done one way or the other. That's, that's, that's where I am. And I think that this is the best way to get us there long-term, but.
Councilman Perrow.
At the HR liaison last year, I did read through every single line of the new proposed changes. And obviously doing this for the first time, I asked Crystal a lot of questions about the context that I was, should have. What, what eyes am I supposed to be using as I'm reviewing this? And I, I didn't notice all, I paid attention to what was lined out as much as what was added. And I didn't, I didn't feel like there was a, a lot that was being taken out of the poli, you know, there, there wasn't, it didn't, I didn't get the impression there was a lot being removed from the existing policies. Although I understand Council, Councilman Burns' point about it, it seems like these are just statements that are being made and we don't have a lot of meat to the policies. But I didn't notice significant changes being removed from the policies. I noticed it was, it seemed like it was, it was summarizing things a little bit better. Maybe trying to make some more concise wording. What was missing for me was, what I didn't know was in changing this policy and in how it's worded and, and what it's intending to address, where did that, where did that then change the procedure and what's going to be the cascading effect for the procedure in how this policy has changed? That wasn't provided to us. And it's possible it wasn't provided because we don't know yet exactly how the, the, how behavior will change based on the policies being more statements and summaries. So one of, you know, if, if it's, for me to answer this question, I feel like I would need to get more familiar with the procedures. And I'm happy to do that if that would be helpful to make this decision. But I didn't get the impression reading through line by line that the policies were so significantly changing that it would take away something from city council. The, the policies that where I thought that might happen, I had discussions with Crystal about those, sent her a long list of questions. And felt like my answers were, you know, mostly, you know, that they were mostly answered. So this is a really good conversation for me to hear what fellow council is sharing, having, especially those having more experience on what, as I'm looking through all of these policy changes, I need a bigger context of what it is I'm supposed to be seeing what it is I could possibly be missing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
As you can see, we're a little all over the map on this. I know you want to get this done, but I, I think if, if we could defer this, have council do further research, have conversations and, and see what we need to, need to do to, to move this forward. I mean, we, we need to resolve it. So I don't know if it takes a week or two weeks, but kick this can down the road and, and make sure we, we can come to agreement and not keep going around in circles, I think.
Certainly fine by us. I would ask you in the interim to take a look at the preamble. I rewrote the preamble. Hopefully address some of what your concerns are because of, because of these concerns. And you had expressed them before. And I tried to create that in the book to make sure that it was clear to people how you apply this and who needs to see it and when and why. So I tried to capture that. Certainly, again, I'm not going to say I'm the wordsmith of the world. So it's certainly a way to address it, but we're in, I mean, we're not in a hurry to get it wrong. We would like to get it the way you would feel the most comfortable with it. And, and again, we had it in place for 20 years without really looking at the structure. We just kept changing it over and over. And every time we changed it, we said, this is kind of procedure. This is really the policy. The policy is the same. This is how we do it. So that was kind of what drove the conversation. But if we need a couple of weeks to come back, that's perfectly fine.
If I could just add one thing and try to put this a little bit in context. We, historically, we have asked all of our employees to read this and understand, read and attest to the information in this document. Now, the patrol officer who's never going to travel, do they need to understand our travel policy? Not until they need to travel. But do we need, do we expect them? So I think that it's like looking at it this from the step, we want people to understand the big picture. Oh yeah, I remember there is a policy on that. And if they need to go further, go learn and read it. So this is almost separating now the bigger items from the little items. And then when you need the little items, you go find the little items that are relevant. Because it's not, well, it's for the entire city. Not everything in here is applicable to everybody in the city and how it is what they're expected to know in a lot of ways. So there is a lot, there is value if we expect our employees or our city council members or mayor to know what's in these documents to make it clear what's important for people to know about. So I would ask each of our city council members, we'll see if we can do this over two weeks. Please get together with Crystal and Bill and identify how you want to move forward or not. If there's certain ones that you don't want to see changed, if there's an overarching statement in the preamble that captures, if you just want to leave it as is, so that they can make a, a direction based on those conversations with you all on what they think is, I would normally have made the council president get you all into alignment. But I think that you're gonna need, they're gonna need you to help bring that up. So please try to do that over the next two weeks. If you don't have any issues, send them a note that says, I have no issues. I'm fine with whatever council, the rest of council decides on, on the topic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
As we close the loop on that, the questions, there's, there's just a lot of this that separated that makes great sense. And the reasoning that Bill and and Crystal have discussed and we've talked about it a little bit as well. It all makes sense. So there's, there may be some, certainly I'm going to have a few that I think should remain in policy and I'll bring those in a couple of weeks. Send it out to the group or through Crystal to the group. But it doesn't mean that the remainder of the work wasn't of great value. And so we're on the two yard line here. A couple of weeks can allow. So I, the mayor, your suggestion of doing it that way is appreciated.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item 20 with the Parks and Recreation Department, Lakeview Golf Course, 2022 pricing discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chris is, well, Chris is bringing up the, the presentation. I'll just make a, a quick overview. First of all, we're, I'm here to discuss the Lakeview Golf Course fees. But we're, I'm not asking you for approval of any of those fees tonight. What I am asking for is your feedback on which version of the fees to publish for a public hearing. So there's still a public hearing and future approval yet to come. We would just like to have some direction on what to publish for, for that public hearing. Well, see, it's been about 14 months now since we took over operations of the, the golf course. And as you know, we've been making a lot of progress on the deferred maintenance. We've also had, thanks to Kemper and their diligent efforts, been able to make great strides in increasing the customer satisfaction out there as evidenced by the results of their continuous surveys. But one of the things that we have seen, and it won't come to any surprise to anyone, is that there's a lot of inflationary pressures out there with costs of both goods and services and labor going up. We're still at the same fees that we were in 2019. And if we expect to come closer to our goal of recovering all of the operational costs, then we need to all of the operational costs, then we need to follow suit and in, increase fees in, in accordance with what we're seeing with inflationary pressures out there. What I have up here for you right now is, first of all, just kind of an exciting number, that 38,739. That's a, if you don't know, that's a big number, that's a big number for the, for the, the course. I think they added to that in December since this was prepared. But it's, it's been a good year. There's also been a lot of costs. The, the list over on the left is, kind of summarizes for you a lot of the deferred maintenance that we've been in, incurring costs on this year. You can see if you look at the spreadsheet, if you just look at that third column with the bottom of 76,711, that's really the rolling 12 month deficit that we're at in the, the operations side of the, the golf course currently. So there are two options to propose to you tonight for additional future discussion. The first is to just take the existing pass structure and basically increase those costs by 6%. You can see this, this is that list of, of passes. There's, and you can see the 2021 column for what the price has been this past year. But we're proposing that they be increased to this year. And this would just keep the same pass structure that we have today. We do have, you know, some experts is what I want to call them in, in, in Kemper and Ryan, who's out there, and they've been doing some pretty diligent analysis of where we sit in the market and how fee structures work across the valley. And they've been looking at what they think would be beneficial to the, are there, our customers and have proposed a slate of, of changes that adds some additional past types. So basically in the main change is that if you take that single unlimited or couple unlimited and family unlimited, and then you add these restricted ones, restricted just means Monday through Friday. So your, your pass is good on weekdays, not weekends. You can see that the price for the restricted is actually less in 2022 than the current unlimited one is 2021. So that could be a benefit. Yeah, someone would pay neck, less next year. But this would be the proposed slate. They've also had a lot of interest in senior and military passes, so those have NAs in the 2021, but a proposed number for 2022. And yeah, I think, can't think of anything else to say about that one right there. The, the proposed change to the green fees is the same in either option, one or two. Okay, so basically it's a 6% across the board increase for greens fees with this, with the, the seniors being the exception to that, those have a smaller increase just to lower the impact on our seniors that are out there. So again, we have these two proposals, one keeping the existing past types. The second one proposing some new past types. I think a logical question is, would we expect similar results in the revenue side? The answer to that is yes. The, the wildcard that we don't know is how many will choose the, the restricted versus the unlimited passes? And until we go through that for a year, we won't really know. But in general, we anticipate similar outcomes either way. With that, I'm going to stand for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Council questions for Steve.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Steve, can you speak to, on option number two? Why the single and couple unlimited passes would increase to 20% instead of 6%? It seems to me like the intention of this would be to move unlimited passes and try to get more people to use the restricted passes? Is this an actual, like, is, is the 20% increase on the unlimited in option two? Is there some financial reason that there's costs that need to be made up? Because of the change in structure? Or is it to sort of encourage more people to use the restricted passes?
Yeah, in rough numbers, if you take the 20-ish percent increase on the unlimited and the decrease to the restricted, it evens out to be a 6% increase. So it's similar as an overall. And Ryan and Mike are both online. And if I misstate any of this, feel free to raise your hand and correct any of this. But it, it's meant to keep it in the same ballpark as an overall, but to offer that restricted pass and, and move some people to that to free up weekend times for those that it works for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
My understanding is that we have a lot of season pass holders. Is that, is that the case? And do we think this would negatively affect playership by having such a significant increase on the unlimited passes?
We do have a significant number of season passes. I don't have the number of passes sold. So Ryan, if you have that and want to jump on, I do have the total number of rounds paid, played by the different, you know, pass holders versus rack rate players, et cetera. Basically about 26% of the rounds played were played by pass holders this last year. If that helps for context. We're, I think they're trying to structure it in a way that will be beneficial to the, many of the pass holders, especially if they prefer that weekday option. I think many of the men's and women's association players that do have tournaments that play on weekends would necessarily opt for the, the, the one that includes weekends.
And just for, for the note, because I do see our CFO in the background. These are not cost recovery dollar suggestions that are here that have been worked with our finance department to come up with what the fee can or should be now or in the future to hit that. And these are based upon current pricing guesstimations that, I mean, I, that's all I got to give. In splitting the thing in half and assuming half are going to go one way, half are going to go the other way. And you're going to hit the same revenue mark as a guesstimation. We, who knows? We may go all one way and see a great reduction in revenue and have that, a lot more people play on Saturdays and make up that revenue. Or we could go the opposite and break in the extra cash through this, through the cells, through that process. So we don't know what the impacts of this would be. The main point was trying to recover something with the 6%. The other is really a decision if we want to try to offer other types of passes to see what type of response we get, not a cost recovery basis model, though. That's clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate you kind of leading with that, because that's, this is where my question is, is what's, is the 6% then just designed to get us in kind of competitive with them, other courses that are similar in this market? I know you put kind of the market comparison in the packet. That's, that's really the intent behind is just to make sure that we're priced competitively with other courses.
It's a combination of pricing competitively and looking at inflation. I think true inflation combined over those couple of years is closer to 8%. So it's probably not even a, a full inflationary adjustment. But we're trying to take, take it on a bite at a time.
Mr. Mayor.
Especially as we maybe come into having some course reductions as we do.
As we go into irrigation season with construction and things to come.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Steve, can you just give us a little flavor of kind of where the, the concept for like the, I kind of call them class subscriptions, so the senior military, why that's being proposed and recommended?
I think it's interest from people contacting the course. Ryan, if you're online and want to take that question, I'll push that one to you.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, it's again, to be competitive, it's what, you know, other courses are doing. We get a lot of requests. And so this, this whole structure is just based on to, to one, give people more options. There's a lot of people that don't want to play on the weekends. That saves them a little bit of money by doing the restricted. There's people that, and then also just to honor the senior military as well. So just to give people more choices and, and just to be competitive in the market. And this puts us, you know, right in the middle.
So Mr. Mayor, Steve, I don't know if you're looking for feedback now, later, kind of when and how you want that provided?
Looking for feedback specifically tonight, we need feedback on which version to, to publish for a public hearing. But we'll take any and all feedback you've got.
Mr. Mayor, for what it's worth, I think it's a slippery slope when you start providing kind of class-based memberships. Clearly some seniors are on a more fixed income. I think we always want to appreciate and, and honor our military men and women. But you open that door for, well, what else? I'm sure emergency responders, police and firefighters would like to see a, a, a break. Teachers do a great job. I'm sure they would like to see breaking. I just, I see you start if, if we're, if we respond to every request, we're going to have all sorts of potentials for tiered memberships. I think a single couple unlimited versus restricted, that seems to make sense. I get it just a little more hesitant when we start opening the doors for other, other groups. So that's, I, I know you've kind of given us two options and I've kind of created my own, which is.
Understanding yours, it is basically number two without the senior military and senior couple, just single, couple, family, restricted, unlimited.
Little couple, family, yeah, restricted, unrestricted.
And then I assume the half-priced junior and private cart pass would stay as well? Cause those are current ones.
Councilman Pearl.
Given that there are other courses that have the same structure, I'm not opposed to, to option number two. Accept that. I don't, I don't love the 20% increase on the unlimited passes in, in one year. Is, is parks considering doing increases on an annual basis depending on what the market is allowing for? If not, maybe we consider increasing it a little more incrementally on those unlimited passes over the two years' time instead of one year, one year's time. And then that'll also give us, you know, kind of figure out. I mean, I understand that you want people to, you know, if, if you only make a $150 difference between the restricted and the unlimited, why wouldn't you just buy the unlimited? So you have to kind of set it up so that there's a point, right? But I, I, I just, I, I'm not a fan of the 20% increase in one year on those unlimited passes. So I don't know if there's a way that we could modify that to be a lower amount. Otherwise the categories on option number two, I think are great separations. Like there are other courses that have moved that direction too.
I think at the end of the day, I just need a, a motion and some agreement from a majority. And we will publish whatever council desires.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
To that point, I, I would recommend we publish option two as presented. Understanding that that public hearing gives us a chance to get some feedback or not from whether it's a senior or military community. Allows them to participate and we may then decide to shave that off or not. But option two, it came from the recommendation from the folks running the course. I like it. My initial reaction is I like it. I think it pays homage to the, a lot of the senior community that frankly lives around it and funded the papers and has given money to do cart paths and plant trees 20 years ago. And so I like that it's considered as a little carve out. But for the public hearing, I think option two is presented as a great starting point. See what we hear from the community.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Yeah, looking at it, when you compare to the, you, thank you for doing that spreadsheet, by the way. It made a lot easier, Councilman Burton, for bringing that up because a lot of that comparison. And, and that's where a lot of these folks go that are, are breaking that out further. And I, I think we should as well and go with that option two and, and give that to, to people. People want choices and we're going to give it to them. And we want them to come to our golf course and utilize it. So I think that's a good approach.
That's three. Do I have one more? Who wants to publish option two?
Publishing option.
Councilman Strater, was that a yes from you as well? Okay, so you have your direction, Steve. You're good on how to move forward in that conversation.
We'll publish option two and be back for a public hearing.
Thank you. Also, we do have one more item on the agenda. My understanding is that individual can come back at six. If we would like to do executive session now with the staff that's here, to make sure we get through that.
That's possible. That would be my request.
Okay. Councilman Holden.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session per IDO code 74-2061D.
I have a motion of second to go into executive sessions, there are discussion. If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Pearl. Cavanagh. Burton. Hoglan.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries and we will move into executive session. All eyes motion carries and we will move into executive session.
Council, do I have a motion come out of executive session?
Move to come out of executive session?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to come out of executive session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys, have it, and we are out of executive session. Continuing with our, with our 4:30 agenda, we have one more item to do before we get to our six o'clock meeting. So we're going to move into item 21, which is the Parks and Recreation Department Master Plan Update on Cost Recovery Overview. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Jackson with screenplay.
Good evening, Mayor Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I'm just going to take a moment here to share my screen. Okay, first time didn't work there. I'm going to give it a second go. Okay, I believe you should be seeing it now.
Yes, we see it.
Wonderful. Well, hello, my name is Teresa Jackson, and I am with a firm called Berry Dunn, formerly Green Play. And we were selected to manage your Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well as a cost recovery study. And so this evening, Steve asked me to join you in providing a brief, high-level overview as to what will be involved in our cost recovery study. Excuse me. So our approach to cost recovery is very philosophical. And so we use what we term the pyramid methodology to facilitate the process and the conversation with both staff and the public. The pyramid methodology was adopted over 20 years ago, and it's a management tool that has been used by agencies from coast to coast. It is essentially a benefits continuum. It's a way to take a look at your programs and consider the benefit that they, they provide your tax-paying community. And so as we look at those programs and services, we look at them and say, does it have a high or a mostly community benefit? Or does an individual benefit come into play? So the foundation of the pyramid is really your core programs, things such as your parks, your trails, maybe your community events. And as you move up the pyramid, the programs and services that live there typically start to introduce this individual benefit. Many programs will have what we term a balanced benefit and live in the middle, where it's a little bit of both. It's a benefit to the community to have youth sports, but there's also an individual benefit to the youth who are exposed to those sports. But when you get up to the top of the pyramid, those programs are typically things like a private swimming lesson, private tennis lessons, or maybe some concessions. So this is the framework that we'll use as we work through the process. And we'll take a look at all the programs and services that you provide, and we'll develop categories of service. So it's just really a grouping of like things. So both the staff as well as the public can weigh in on that benefit of the service to the tax-paying community. So again, this philosophy really looks at who's benefiting. It understands that the basic level of service or your core programs should be free to the public or heavily supported by tax dollars. It also recognizes that fees are necessary and responsible to have a robust park and rec portfolio. Programs, excuse me, fees come into play in order for those programs to be available. It also recognizes that the greatest, the greater the individual benefit, the higher the cost recovery should be. So again, this is just another view of that same concept, really reiterating that community benefit equals tax dollars. Individual benefit is where fees come into place, and the greater the individual benefit, the higher the cost recovery. And so that'll be the premise of the study. And so this next slide here, I just want to briefly give you a high-level overview of the process so you could have a sense of the various steps your team will be taking over the next few months. So just today, we had the strategic kickoff with the project team. And so that meeting is really to allow me to get a better understanding of the conditions there and to provide an orientation. Next month, I'll be sitting down with the programming staff, and we'll be doing a similar orientation, but really making sure they have a clear understanding of this methodology as well as the process. One thing we really like to establish early on is that buy-in and really bringing as many staff as we can into the fold. So ultimately, when the study is delivered and recommendations are put into place, staff will have that buy-in to carry them forward. Once we've finished with the orientation, that's where we start developing those categories of service. And that is all to gear up for what we term workshop two. And workshop two is where we have both the staff and the public evaluate those programs and services and place them onto the pyramid. And ultimately, we'll be reconciling what we heard from staff as well as what we heard from the public in order to finalize a pyramid. And during this workshop two, we really do invite all of you to participate. It's a great opportunity to get some perspective on how the public feels about different programs and services and to also chime in on your own, your own feelings on those programs. We have, during the workshop, we put together small working groups so that people can really sit and discuss those programs and services because everybody's coming to the table with a different background, different perspective, and we're really looking to build consensus through this process. So as we come out of workshop two, that's where the really heavy lifting begins in that in order to make recommendations for what future cost recovery should look like, we really have to understand what your current cost recovery is. So at this stage, we are taking a deep dive into the revenues associated with each service. And we're also taking a look at all department expenses and allocating them appropriately to all those programs and services. And once we understand current cost recovery, that's where we'll sit down with your project team and we'll start to develop goals for the future. And each tier level of the pyramid will ultimately have a cost recovery goal that's a range. After those ranges are identified, that's where we'll really have a good understanding of any key issues that have come up along the way or recommendations as it relates to how you make those cost recovery goals. Are there incremental changes that can be made? Or is there going to be more of a long-term approach where over the next five years, you're implementing a 3% fee increase in order to get to a cost recovery goal? So once we know where you're at, where those goals are, we will sit with your team and establish recommendations that are feasible for your community. So in closing, just a brief overview again of when all of these steps will be taking place. Currently, January and February is all about orientation and for me to understand current policies and conditions there. As we get into April, we'll be further engaging the staff as well as bringing the public into the fold to chime in. And then as we get into May, that is the point where we should know your current cost recovery and be setting those goals in order to deliver the recommendations and study for you in late spring, early summer. And with that, I'd really like to just open it up to any questions you might have about the process.
Thank you, Teresa. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mccavaner.
Teresa, just a couple of quick questions for you. Who ultimately determines kind of where something would rank on that pyramid? Is that the, the, the kind of focus groups that you're forming? Is that something that Green Play makes a recommendation on? Is it staff? How is that part determined?
Yeah, so it's a collaboration of staff and the public. So staff is very familiar with programs, and so they will often put them on a pyramid because they're looking at it through the lens of a programmer versus the lens of the tax-paying community and what they think benefits the community. And so we keep the results of each workshop separate, but then we ultimately reconcile the pyramid. So we identify categories where we had mismatches. We look at what those mismatches were. We're looking at how these small group, public groups scored things from the perspective of using range mode and mean. So we've got some data to work with, but we also have what we heard through those meetings. And so quite often, we'll, we will be in a situation where we have, you know, five to eight categories that are a mismatch between staff and public that we work through. And, and sometimes the public doesn't fully understand all the intricacies of the, of the program. And so project teams lean, leans towards what they heard from staff. But in other scenarios, they, the staff and project team will learn so much from the public and what they said, that it leans towards the public.
Just additional.
Sorry, my voice is a little off.
No, Teresa, this is, this is very helpful. And just one other question, when it comes to determining what costs are considered in a program, who ultimately is determining that? Is that something that you bring a recommendation? Does you get direction from the city? How is that determined?
Yeah, so that direction will come from the project team, and it varies with each agency we work with. And so we're always going to count those direct costs, but it is very critical that we identify what it is we're going to count in full before we start counting things because it needs to be applied uniformly throughout the process, and the team needs to be able to carry that methodology forward. So in some situations, agencies are not equipped to count indirect costs, and so we will focus the study on direct costs. In other circumstances, the data is there, and so we include utilities. We include all those miscellaneous costs. The overall cost recovery will look lower, but the project team is making that determination ultimately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? Council on Pro.
Sorry about that. Hi, Teresa, that, the schematic, the drawing that you gave us was very, very helpful to kind of get a big picture of how we will address, or, you know, kind of the conceptual piece. But from the public's, the public involvement, I think you had said as workshop two, what kind of, what, how will that be structured? How the public will be involved? Will it be like a survey form? And then also, what kind of questions are they asked? Is it, is it like, are you willing to, to pay for X, Y, and Z recreation? Or, you know, and some examples? Or can you kind of give us a little more detail about how that works on the, on the public side?
Yes, absolutely. So I, I guess you might see it as a little non, non-traditional because it's, it's the use of small working groups. So Steve and I have discussed that it is important to provide these both in person as well as virtually. So we will have options for both, and we're looking at four or five sessions. Ideally, at each session, we would have 12 to 20 people that we would place into groups of three or four. And so if this was via Zoom, we would use breakout rooms. Each group will have a, a staff facilitator to walk them through the process. They will be given categories of service. So there'll be 25 to 35 categories or buckets that have been developed to define your programming. And so like programs are going to be grouped together. And as a small group, they will work to place those categories onto the pyramid. And building that consensus will be the key piece because you might have one individual who sees something like a park as being very individualized. I only see that other people use it, I never use it. But through conversation, they'll learn that there's other benefits to the park. Even if you don't use it, there's an, there's, it increases home value. It increases livability and things of those natures, so that nature. So we have these groups work through each category and place them. So it's not one person's individual perspective.
Council, any additional questions? All right, thank you very much. Teresa, look forward to working with you.
Okay, it was a pleasure. Thank you all.
Council, we reached the end of our session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys, have it, we are adjourned. Mr. Clark, do you need to do any switchovers? Are we ready to go?
We're ready to go.
All right. Council, call the meeting to order. For the record, it is January 18, 2022, at 6:15 PM. We will begin this evening's Rager City Council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater. You're muted on your phone. Okay. It's easier. Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Burrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavaner.
Here.
Councilwoman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next time, it's the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is our community invocation, which will be delivered by a pastor of any hanky. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you again for the opportunity to come and pray for you tonight. Let's pray. God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together and to do the business of leading in the city. I thank you for each person on the council, God, for their gifts, their talents, their strengths and their personalities. And pray, God, as they consider and discuss the business, that you would fill them with wisdom, with discernment, and then they would make decisions that would ultimately benefit their neighbors. God, we pray for our first responders tonight. We ask God that those on the front lines in healthcare, in education, in law enforcement, in fire protection, God, would just receive your blessing and protection as they serve us. Would you continue to help Meridian to be a place of hospitality and generosity for its citizens? And we ask that we'd be a city that would glorify your name. And I ask these things through Christ. Amen. And God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. See you next week.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you.
Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We have no changes for the agenda this evening, so I move to adopt the agenda as. Oh, that's right. Forgot. Thank you. The executive session, we completed that during our work session, so we can vacate the executive session. That's towards the bottom of the agenda. So with that change, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agendas amended by vacating executive sessions during discussion. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Guys have it. And the agenda is adopted as amended. Ms. Clark, anyone want to send up another public form?
Mr. Mayor, we have one. Terry Dennington's here.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello. Yes.
Thank you, Terry.
My name is Terry Dennington and I reside at 4581 West Big Creek Street in Meridian. I want to thank Mayor Simison and the city council for letting me address them with my thoughts. The rich history of the Treasure Valley and the city of Meridian in particular with regards to agriculture, with the original fruit orchards of Thomas Davis and the corn, alfalfa, mint, and other crops are still visible as we drive through our city. Because of the agriculture, water for irrigation was brought to the valley and many of our residents still benefit from the irrigation canals today. The many dairy farms in Meridian established it as a dairy center for the state of Idaho. We still celebrate this part of our heritage on Dairy Days. I watch so many of the farms being turned into housing, which I understand is sorely needed because of the city's growth. I commend the leadership of our city in working on how to address the building and infrastructure issues through the comprehensive plan. So I would like to have the city council consider how we can conserve some of that agricultural land and retain it for future generations. I was born in Southern California and my father was a tenant farmer before I was born. My sisters and I took him back to various areas where he had lived. When we came to the farm area, he couldn't even figure out where the land would have been. It was all now large industrial buildings. There are many current residents of Meridian that remember what it was like when they were growing up here. I hope this is something you will consider. Perhaps you could put me in touch with the city planner or the parks director to see how that may be possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
With that, counsel, we will move on to our public hearing this evening, which is rehearing from 11:30 2020 for Fast Eddie's at Eagle, H 2021-0068. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the planning staff had some conflicts tonight. And because this is as simple as it is, they felt I could handle it for them. This might seem very familiar to you. We heard Mr. Eddie's application a couple of months ago. After we completed the process, we realized, well, Mr. Eddie hadn't realized we changed our noticing requirements. And the staff and planning hadn't realized that he hadn't submitted an affidavit of noticing. So since we were defective in notice, we wanted to be sure we covered all the bases legally to complete this project properly. So we re-noticed it for this. We put up the appropriate signage, appropriate affidavits have been filed. Mr. Eddie is here. If you recall, this is regarding access and access onto the roadway from his property into the adjacent roadway and what the purpose of it was, but I'll let Mr. Eddie explain the specifics. But again, you've heard it, certainly it is a decision point still for you. You can change your mind. We will create a new set of findings with an update from this meeting. And then a new development agreement will be generated with those updated findings, if that's the direction of the council. With that, unless you have questions for me, please don't. And then if you can let Mr. Eddie can explain his project, I think you probably have enough information to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just for the record, I was absent at that particular meeting, but I, I did go back and watch that meeting and this piece with it. So I've followed along the presentation from staff, the deliberation from councils as well.
And for the record, that was on November 30th, 2021, for anyone that needs to go find it in the minutes. Counsel, anything? All right. Then with the applicant, I'd like to come forward. Say your name and address for the record and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Steve Addy, 3775 North Eagle Road, Meridian. I'm not sure what I need to say. I think I'd rather answer questions on this. I think what happened was is the, I thought everybody knew me and I didn't have the legal affidavit notarized. So that was, I think, the condition that kind of fell through the cracks. So other than Luke not being here, I think, I, I think we kind of beat it to death that night on everything we went over. I would just answer questions at this time, I would think. Unless you guys would like me to do more.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just one question, Steve. Your, your neighbor to the west, the facility that's going in, that's still proceeding. And they, they prefer not to have that access point. Is that still the case?
As far as I know, that's, was their request that night too. Nothing's changed that I've heard of.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I think at the hearing that we had in November, I do believe that we agreed to make that emergency access only, not available to the public. So if that's, if I'm remembering correctly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ready, but I think that's what we decided on.
That's correct.
Okay. Any concerns with that, Mr. Ready?
No, no concerns.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. Mr. Corcoran, we have one sent up to provide testimony on this item.
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up in advance.
Okay, with the applicant, is there anybody in the room that'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time? And there's nobody online, so it'd only be people in the room. Seeing nobody, did the applicant like to make any final comments? They have their, any final comments? So counsel, turn it over to you for any questions, motions, or actions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, just to kick off a, a few comments, I'm happy to make a motion. I'd be voting as I, as I did previously. We have to do a lot of issues and different things and, and in my question, that property to the north, I think, did I say west earlier, but it was north.
You know what I meant.
Has not, has not changed. They didn't want that access point for what they're doing for their project. Emergency access makes sense to have it that way. And so I, I think we can, can, my perspective continue forward as, as before.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Thought about this a lot. Staff, staff recommended denial and staff report. And you know, as when that happens, we always take that pretty seriously as a council and think about that. And one of the concerns I have in this is just that, you know, out of our last hearing, it, from my, from my perception and perspective, and, and definitely want to hear if this is not accurate, was that the applicant just didn't really thoroughly go through and read the development agreement and it was an oversight. And I have concern about that just from a big picture standpoint of any other applicant that may have that same experience in their development agreement, that there, that there's an oversight, that, that we may be opening an invitation to have other applicants come and request a modification to their development agreement because of something that just was missed. And if that is not a correct perception of what happened, I'd love to hear otherwise. But that is my perception. And so my, I'm, I still stand with staff's recommendation of denial.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
You know, Mr. Eddie gave me his word that he would do his best to improve the safety concerns in this area. I was a little frustrated in that meeting, you know, by what I thought was an oversight. But I guess my perspective hasn't really changed, just in terms of being constructive and trying to move forward the best project that we can. I'm going to be in approval tonight.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to close the public hearing on H 2021-0068.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Guys have it. And the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. I would move to approve the request for modification to the existing development agreement, H 2018-0006. And before I continue, I, I just noticed that number 006 is not the same as in the notice 0068. Number one, Mr. Nary, which, do we know which one that is?
Mr. Mayor, I can actually address that. The, I believe, the 006, 0006 was actually the 2018 project, the original development agreement, and this project is the 0068.
So we need to approve 0068, which is the request. So, okay. Okay, so let me try that motion again, if you have mine. I, I moved to approve H 02021-0068 to remove the requirement for driveway and to make that access emergency access only.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 2021-0068. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, Corcoran called it all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Burrow. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton. Hoagland.
Aye.
Five ayes, one no, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is ordinance number 21, 22-1963. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 176 regarding city council liaison appointments, duties, and term, amending Meridian City Code Section 211 C10 regarding city staff support for commissions, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Was there anybody that liked it read in its entirety? Seen none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Move that we approve ordinance number 22-91963 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 22-1963 under suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion? Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. And the statement here doesn't say anything about a waiver of reading rules. So does there need to be a suspension of rules still? Is it, are we waiving two more?
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Members of the council, we are, and it is not required always to put that in. We put it in a land use application primarily, so we are still waiving the reading rules, but you can do this.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to adjourn all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Thanks, Liz.